Thank you. Please note that today's meeting is being livestreamed on the National Capital Planning Commission website, and we do have a quorum, so we'll call the meeting to order, and we will proceed as per the agenda that has been publicly noticed. Agenda item number one is the report of the chairman, and I have just two items. It's with mixed emotions that I report that Chairman Hart has resigned. He was the Commissioner, Commissioner Hart. I'm not trying to give away the job. Commissioner Hart was the Maryland representative. He has served admirably on this commission for the past several years. He has served our nation well. He was a 20-year career naval officer. He's an architect and a planner. He has been a presidential appointee here under President Bush for the last three years, and simply put, he retired. He sold his Maryland home, and he and his wife moved to Florida, and their homes sold much quicker than they thought, and we'll miss him. He brought a lot of great expertise here. He came to us because he had been, in his private professional capacity, he had overseen the National WWII Memorial Design Team, and his work there caught the eye of many, and President Bush nominated him to serve here. So we'll miss John Hart, but because he had to move during the one month of the year that we were not meeting, unfortunately, he did not get to say a proper goodbye, but we will follow up with John for sure. So we will await a new commissioner to be appointed representing the state of Maryland. Item number two that I have to report is a former presidential appointee, Melvin Estrin, passed away on July 9th. He served on the commission from 1997 to 2000. Some of you may remember Mr. Estrin. That's all I have here. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Agenda item number two is the proposed, I'm sorry. Yeah, agenda item number two is the proposed 2015 commission meeting schedule, and you have it for you. Is it here on our desk? It's been moved. Is there a second to go ahead and adopt the meeting schedule for 2015, Mr.? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Agenda item number three is reported to the executive director, Mr. Costin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon. I just have a few items to report. On Friday, September 19th, from 8:30 to 10:30 a.m., our next speaker series event, Residents to Presidents Pennsylvania Avenues Rural in the 21st Century, will take place in the museum's Knights Conference Center. We have a great panel that will look and explore future possibilities for this iconic avenue. We have Zachary Schrag, who's a history professor at George Mason University, Carol Colletta, who's Vice President of the Knight Foundation, Gabe Klein, who is our former DDOT Director, Department Transportation Director, but also a visiting fellow at the Urban Land Institute, and Ellen Ryan, who is the Creative Placemaking Program Director at the Trust for Public Land. This event will be co-sponsored by NCPC, the Park Service, GSA, and the District, as well as the Downtown DC Business Improvement District. We also would like to thank the museum for offering their space, and you'll find a card at your desk with more details. Just a few staff announcements. After 11 years with the commission, Christine Saum, Director of Urban Design and Plan Review, retired last month. Christine has served the agency with distinction during her tenure, and we wish her a wonderful retirement. I'd also please announce that Shane Detman was appointed Director of Urban Design and Plan Review on a permanent basis, so congratulations to Shane. I'd like to spend a few moments on a follow-up project to the commission's Monumental Core Framework Plan. I would like to invite Amy Tars of our staff to brief the commission on an effort that we partnered with the Cultural Tourism DC Organization. We had conducted an assessment for heritage trails for the Southwest Federal Center and the Foggy Bottom Northwest Rectangle. So, Amy?
Thank you, Marcel.
Can someone help me with looking for a talk?
Good afternoon, Chairman Bryant and members of the commission. My presentation today will cover two similar assessments for the feasibility of establishing heritage trails in two neighborhoods. This is the Foggy Bottom Northwest Rectangle and the Southwest Federal Center. The Monumental Core Framework Plan identified these two neighborhoods as future cultural and workplace destinations, and, thank you, Tony. Let me go ahead and start with the first slide. There it is. So these are the two locations that I mentioned, and as part of the Monumental Core Framework Plan study, one of the goals of the plan is to identify opportunities to improve connections between the National Mall, the downtown, the city, and the waterfront. In the process of, as part of a follow-up for the Monumental Core Framework Plan, we started looking at the heritage trails as an opportunity to improve these connections. In the last few years, redevelopment plans and expansion activities in these two areas warranted a closer look at the opportunities to improve the pedestrian amenities and connectivity in these areas. So building on the federal government's successful development of the Federal Triangle Heritage Trail, NCPC saw an opportunity to replicate the use of neighborhood heritage trails to enhance the public realm in these two precincts. When constructed, the trails will link these two precincts thematically to the National Mall and to the larger system of neighborhood heritage trails in the district, including the Federal Triangle, the Downtown, and the Southwest Center Heritage Trail. A heritage trail is a self-guided walking tour featuring a series of interpretive markers highlighting the art, architecture, history, and prominent residents of the neighborhood. Because heritage trails are designed to encourage the visitors to discover a neighborhood on foot, they are typically no more than a mile long and usually starts and/or ends at the metro station. So each neighborhood heritage trail is also developed with a brochure which trail users can pick up for free at local stores in the neighborhood. The Southwest Federal Center Heritage Trail roughly covers the same area as the district's Maryland Avenue's Small Area Plan and the Southwest Eco District. The trail consists of about 14 to 15 markers and starts at the LaFont Metro Station and ends at the Smithsonian Station. The Foggy Bottom Northwest Rectangle Heritage Trail covers an unusually large neighborhood. In order to keep the trails within walkable length, the area will have two trails, each with 15 markers. The North Loop, approximately two miles long, starts and ends at the Foggy Bottom Metro Station. It will highlight the social history of the Foggy Bottom neighborhood in the vicinity of the George Washington University and the John F. Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts. The South Loop will showcase the missions, history, architecture, and employees of the federal and institutional neighbors in the area north of the National Mall, as well as the local businesses and residents in the area prior to the establishment of these institutions. The South Loop covers the area referred to as the Northwest Rectangle in the Monumental Core Framework Plan. These assessment reports are the first steps in understanding and documenting the range of possible routes and topics for neighborhood heritage trails. The reports also provide an implementation schedule and a cost estimate for each of the trails. The potential trail routes and topics that are in the reports were developed through multiple consultations with local and organizational stakeholders, including federal agencies, international and cultural institutions, civic leaders, and local businesses in the two neighborhoods. Several federal agencies and institutions saw opportunities to gain exposure for their educational and cultural programs through the heritage trails, while local stakeholders saw a way to celebrate the rich history of the neighborhoods. Cultural Tourism DC and NCPC are currently exploring opportunities for funding the heritage trails. Once funding is identified, detailed planning and design of the heritage trail subject matter will commence. We will invite the stakeholders back to work with us and the selected consultant on the final route and topics. NCPC staff will then take the final trail designs to the commission for approval. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Tars. Any questions for Mr. Costa or Ms. Tars? I think it's a citing project. We look forward to it. Agenda item number four is legislative update. Ms. Skylar?
Nothing to report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, good. Thank you. Then agenda item number five is the consent calendar, and we have three items. Item number five A is the master plan for Joint Base Anacostia Bowling. Five B is the Fuller Road Access Control Facility at Marine Corps Base Quantico. And third, five C is the Metro Memorial Park at New Hampshire and South Dakota Avenues Northeast. Are there any questions on the consent, any item of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move it, but I would like to comment on, make one comment. I spoke to staff about this already. There is some concern about view sheds and some other issues that affect us, and they have been mentioned as part of the sort of dictum of this report, and I'm satisfied with that, but I wanted to make note of it, at least on the record.
Okay.
So moved.
So it's been moved, the consent calendar's been moved and seconded. Without further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Those three items were passed. Agenda item number six A is the Southwest Eco District Plan Addendum, and we have Ms. Sullivan.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. It's my pleasure to bring to you today the Southwest Eco District Plan Addendum for your final review. We're asking that you accept the plan addendum and provide guidance on its future use. So just to refresh everybody's memory, this is the Southwest Eco District Boundary, just south of the National Mall. This also applies to the addendum. It's been about four years since we launched the Southwest Eco District Initiative, and in that time, the district has completed the Maryland Avenue Southwest Plan, GSA issued the RFI for Federal Triangle South, a larger group of federal buildings within the Eco District. The task force completed the Southwest Eco District Plan, and more recently, we completed the 10th Street Programmatic Concept Design and the Interim Banneker Connection Concept, which you saw in January, and we've also finished the Stormwater Infrastructure Study. Since that time and over the past six to eight months, we actually have accomplished a few more things, which are very exciting, so I want to take a couple minutes to talk about them. Perhaps the most exciting is that the Southwest Eco District Initiative has been accepted into the Target Cities Program, along with 10 other eco-districts throughout the country. And this program is managed by the National Eco Districts Organization and will be a 24, or is a 2014 commitment of the Clinton Global Initiative. So what does this mean? NCPC and its partners, GSA, the district agencies, and the Southwest Business Improvement District will participate in a two-year partnership with the Eco Districts Organization to really accelerate district-scale sustainability in this area. As part of the Clinton Global Initiative, we'll be able to use knowledge from around the world to help us figure out the recommendations that we'd like to move forward in the area, and it also just obviously elevates this to a global scale, which is very exciting. We'll be kicking this project off next week, and we'll be developing a two-year work program, and so we'll be back to give you updates on that. And then all three of the eco-districts here in Washington DC will be featured at the end of this month at the National Conference here in Washington DC. In April, the district also completed the Maryland Avenue Southwest Transportation Study. This was a critical study that needed to be done regarding the decking of Maryland Avenue and whether it was actually feasible. The results of that study are that it is feasible to deck the rail line for Maryland Avenue, and it results in no failing intersections. It carries a heavy price tag of $580 million, and this study itself will be able to inform the next NEPA work that would need to be done, and we also need to develop the funding strategy for this, but this is an important first step. In April, GSA also moved forward with an RFQ for the Regional Office Building and the Cotton Annex Building. It's a property exchange for construction services, and this is important to the Eco District Initiative because it's an opportunity to bring in a new mix of uses in this area. Currently, the Cotton Annex is vacant, so we're excited about how this proceeds. I'm also excited to say that on June 23rd, the mayor signed the Southwest Business Improvement District Legislation, and that's currently on the Hill awaiting passage, hopefully in October, and that would mean that the bid would be up and running at the end of this year, which is very exciting because they are an important partner in implementing a lot of what happens here. Lastly, I just want to update that there is, has been some on-the-ground activity. I don't know if anyone has seen it, but JBG has finished their redevelopment of their plaza, which opens up all the retail space underneath, so it actually already is starting to transform a little bit of 10th Street in a small way, which is exciting. So that brings me to the purpose of the addendum today. First and foremost, the purpose of this addendum is to provide the technical information that inform the development of the plan. I want to be clear that it does not change the information that was in the plan. It also adds clarity to the key public realm and development objectives, and it provides some urban design principles. Given all of the planning work currently underway in this area, we think this is very timely, especially with all the technical information that it includes, and it's similar to the plan, it's a starting point, and we anticipate that it can be further refined in the future. So the addendum is not a regulatory document, just like the plan. It is a guiding document. It can be used to inform future planning and redevelopment for the area, the work that the Smithsonian Institution is doing, and we hope that it can also provide some predictability and continuity for development. Our process in developing the addendum was pretty straightforward. We drafted it earlier this spring. We sought stakeholder input. As you know, we put it out for public comment at the end of, following the June commission meeting for 30 days, and then we've used all of the input that we've received to refine it, and we're here in presenting the final addendum in front of you today. So what I'd like to do is go through an overview, a quick overview, of what's in it, and I'll talk about the public comments that we received as I go through each section. All of the public comments are now at the end of the addendum, and there's also a table of how NCPC responded to all of those comments at the end of the addendum. So the first section is the General Development Principles. It's basically organized around these topics here, so an example would be building massing and design should reinforce the street wall and define LaFont Streets, view corridors, and open spaces. An example for roof scape would be rooftop equipment should be integrated within the building mass of the building, things like that. And aside from some minor wordsmithing comments, we didn't really receive any substantial comments on this section. The next section lays out the assumptions that were used for the widths of the streets in the Southwest Eco District Plan. The plan, as you know, reestablished the LaFont Street Grid at the widths in the LaFont Plan, with the widths of the LaFont Plan, with the exception of Virginia Avenue, which our plan showed at 120 feet. Historically, Virginia Avenue is at 160 feet, but because of a change in the overall conditions in the area, we felt that a reduction could be evaluated for future consideration. That section also includes a discussion on the Height of Buildings Act and the allowable heights, per the Height of Buildings Act, for each of the development parcels that we had proposed in the Southwest Eco District Plan. Also, we, also in this section on allowable height, the addendum discusses the national interest to protect in this area of the Monumental Core and related guidance for parcel development. So in summary, that would include views from the mall, views of the Smithsonian Castle, of the Capitol, of the Washington Monument, and then Reservation 113 and Banneker Park as well. And then the next section in the addendum is that on street classification, which we had in the plan, and basically, we just expand on the street classification that was originally developed. So for example, there's additional guidance now on what it means to be a monumental street, what it would mean to be a civic street, and so forth, and we didn't receive any comments on this section either. And so I don't expect you to be able to read this, but I just want to, and it's a little overwhelming, I just want to point out that all of the technical information with regard to the streets, both today and proposed in the plan, is included here. Believe it or not, this was actually when GSA issued their RFI, we received a lot of questions regarding our assumptions made on the widths of streets. And so the addendum also talks specifically about the character of each of the monumental streets, building on that street classification. It highlights the programmatic concept that you saw in January for 10th Street, and with regard to Maryland Avenue, we received a couple of comments that the addendum should address how the existing CSX tracks can be expanded to four tracks and what the resulting impact would be on Reservation 113. Our response to that is that the recently completed Maryland Avenue Transportation Study and the Long Ridge Study actually addressed these in more detail, and we also acknowledge that these need, this is going to need additional study in the future. So the last part of this section is a more of an in-depth focus on Independence Avenue. Again, as I mentioned, when GSA issued their first RFI for federal, well, the only RFI for Federal Triangle South, we received a lot of inquiries about our assumptions with regard to streets, building, and massing, and height, especially as it relates to Independence Avenue. So we decided it was really important to document our thinking at the time. Independence Avenue, similar to Constitution Avenue, is a very unique street, as you know, because it's adjacent to the National Mall and is home to the Smithsonian Campus and several other federal buildings on the south side of the street. Today, the height and setbacks of the federal buildings are such that they generally cannot be seen over the roof lines of the Smithsonian buildings when standing on the mall, and the result when experiencing the mall is that of a truly public space framed by trees and civic institutions. And the combination of building height and setbacks on Independence Avenue when you're standing on the street also creates a pretty nice symmetry with the Smithsonian Campus. And so what we wanted to point out in the addendum and some of the assumptions that we used is that it's sort of interesting on Independence Avenue. When you look at the USDA building, it's not setback, it's setback six feet from the southern right-of-way line, and it has a height currently today of 82 feet. But when you move further east and you look at the Orville Wright Building, it has a height of 130 feet, but it is setback 95 feet from the southern right-of-way line. So it helps to mitigate the impacts to the views from the mall itself. So in terms of our assumptions for the Southwest Eco District Plan, we assumed that we'd have 130-foot buildings inclusive of penthouse mechanical equipment, anything on top, on Independence Avenue. That was our assumption going in, and that's what the physical model out in the lobby represents, and our rationale for that is that we wanted a desire for a vibrant neighborhood, recognizing it needs density, and we also recognize that GSA needs a certain amount of developable square footage to meet their goals and to be able to redevelop this area. We wanted to protect views of the National Mall and that sense of symmetry that I discussed along Independence Avenue. With regard to the setback, we based our setback on, I don't know if you can see that circled in yellow, but we proposed a setback at 34 feet from the southern right-of-way line. That's based on sort of the inset corner of the USDA building on 12th Street there to maintain a similar setback as some of the Smithsonian buildings on the other side of the street. It provides for more sidewalk space and sunlight and helps to mitigate the impact of the proposed 130-foot buildings. So when we developed the Southwest Eco District Plan, we recognized that the height and massing for the area would need additional study. That was, you know, that was something that we knew, we needed to model it more, but that was the best that, you know, we thought at the time. Since then, we've developed additional modeling, given the importance of the street and national resources to protect, and it includes, it's very similar. It includes the same assumptions with regard to setback in height, but we've stepped back the building this time at 110 feet at a height ratio of one to one. So I just, what is included in the addendum is that additional modeling, and I was just going to walk through, these are the viewpoints that we're going to look at, and we did receive some comments on this, so I do want to just walk through these pretty quickly. So as viewed from Independence Avenue, you're now looking east on Independence, and you can see that's stepping back that building at 110 feet, and then it's, you know, there's nothing above 130 after that. This is looking from the Haupt Garden out towards Banneker Park, out 10th Street. The buildings behind, as you go out 10th Street, we assumed would be 130 feet with a 20-foot penthouse. Looking back toward, this is from the mall, looking back towards the Smithsonian Castle, and then looking directly on towards the Smithsonian Castle, and it was around, these were some of the images where we received some comments that this, people felt that this started to negatively affect the open-sky views from the National Mall. And then looking at the Hirshhorn, and then the last image is from 4th Street, where actually, you know, it really depends on where you're standing, but from here, you can't, can't see the new development very much from this perspective. So basically, with regard to the concerns expressed over the massing, NCPC has documented these concerns, and we use them to inform how we comment on the proposed zoning for this area and other future planning work in the future, but we will not be going back and revisiting the Southwest Eco District Plan. So the last section in the addendum expands on the public open space in the plan, Triangle Park, Reservation 113, and Banneker Park that you see here. For Reservation 113, the addendum goes into more detail about what it means to be a neighborhood park. For Banneker Park, it includes the interim connection work that you commented favorably on in January. We did receive a couple of public comments regarding specific designs for Banneker Park and 10th Street, which can inform additional design work that will need to be done for these areas in the future. And we also received a comment that the plan should advocate for a memorial to Benjamin Banneker at this site. As we commented in the plan, NCPC, however, is not allowed to advocate for memorials, so that was our response to that public comment. And then finally, it includes additional guidance for Triangle Park, which is on access with the Washington Monument. So that concludes my overview of the addendum and the public comments that we received. In closing, I'd like to reiterate that the plan and the addendum are a starting point and should serve as guidance for all of the planning work underway in this area in the future. We see it, yeah, just as a guiding document. And so with that, it is the executive director's recommendation that the commission accept the Southwest Eco District Addendum and direct staff to coordinate with federal and local agencies to use the plan and addendum to inform future planning for the area. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Any comments or questions on the addendum? Mr. May?
Yeah, I had just a couple of questions. First one is with regard to the treatment of what's currently the GSA's regional headquarters building. I saw in one image that it is the, more or less the same Pentagon shape that you have now, and then I saw another one where that Pentagon is straightened off, and I'm wondering, I mean, I didn't see anything, I haven't done a very thorough examination of all the materials that you sent, but I didn't see anything that indicated that you were advocating the re-establishment of the space that was C Street running through there.
We were silent on that in the Southwest Eco District Plan. You are right, the plan talks about what would need to happen if you were to change the tracks, so that would be the snipping off the front nose of the GSA building, but we were silent on.
So I'm much less, I'm much less concerned about what happens if the tracks need to change. I'm much more concerned about the long-term view when the tracks are no longer there. They've been buried, they're no longer needed, whatever. I mean, it's easy to imagine that there would be a future where those tracks are no longer there, and then we have what was LaFont Street, C Street, not there anymore. And I would, I would have, I'd like there to be some sort of position taken on this, an aspirational statement, if you will, that there, that we look to a future where C Street actually is re-established in that location, because I think it would make for a better Reservation 113 in the long-term view. The second question I had was, in the public space slide on page 30 or 31, whatever it was, there was, you called out the 10th Street promenade and Reservation 113 and the Triangle Park, but there isn't any mention of that, that linear park. Can you bring that image up?
Yes, it's on my screen.
Oh, there we go. So there's a linear park that's between the northwest corner of Reservation 113 and Independence Avenue that's along.
Oh, yes, yes.
So. So, is there, I mean, is that something that you have addressed already in the Eco-District Plan? Because it's.
It's just not shown.
Right. I mean, those are some of the great, okay, because some of the great little hidden spaces along the Mall, the passages between the Smithsonian buildings to the Mall, those are great. I don't remember what this one is like so much.
It has an Earth Day theme, doesn't it?
Yeah. So, it's, I remember there, some mention of the Earth Day Park, but in any case, the, I think that ought to be called out.
Agreed.
Or else, it winds up, you know, as a potential development site or something, or an expanded development of if that GSA building is redeveloped on that site. So, those are my comments.
Thank you.
Other comments? Ms. McCarthy?
Thanks, Ms. Sullivan. This is really an interesting and voluminous work, and I just wanted to clarify, when we are voting on the EDR and it says that we accept this, what's the legal force of that if later on, there are projects or new ideas that come up that require some amendment in the guidelines?
Yes, I can take a first stab at that. This is not a regulatory document, so this can be used if, let's say, a project came in similar to our Monumental Core Framework Plan, it would be used as guidance. I don't know how to say it stronger in terms of legal terms, but I don't, it doesn't, I don't think it has legal.
It's aspirational, not regulatory.
Yes.
Okay.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none, the matter before you is the, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Williams. We have one public comment, one person signed up for public comment, Mr. Linsley Williams, representing himself. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members. My name is Linsley Williams, and I am speaking just for myself. You should have received overnight a set of comments from me essentially saying, "You've got a very good plan here." I would call it close to perfection, but like most plans, nothing can get quite to perfection. We always need to be open, as Ellen has just said, for changes that come, not working?
A little bit closer.
Sorry. Better? Sorry. In any event, I think it's a good plan, and I think the EDR is well-constructed, it should be approved. What I tried to do in my comments is essentially identify a series of questions that I feel that are open and that warrant scrutiny as we go forward. I come to the question, for example, of what's the future of the rail system that Mr. May just mentioned? Maybe it will be down to three tracks, maybe it will be down to no tracks, but in the meantime, tracks in a public park, Reservation 113, are not exactly something you normally would want to do under site planning, putting them right next to each other. I've also suggested that more study be given to the fact that we have five subway lines, all but the red line, converging underneath this whole area, and also the VRE station, possibly a future MARC station. This is an incredibly well-served area. It's supposed to be a place of employment, a place of other kinds of things, and I believe that it warrants attention to what we could allow for additional density there going up. Not wanting to try and reopen the Hyde Act, Mr. Chairman. I've proposed that we try instead to use.
That for another 104 years.
That we try to use another device called the measuring point, which the whole platform of the LaFonte area has. And by taking the platform and extending it around and trying to encase the trains for the duration that they're there, and slipping it a little bit around on Virginia Avenue to the southeast, you get an opportunity to get to 160 feet, but it only is measured at 130. So, but in the railroad sense, I was hoping Mr. Ames would still be here and could tell us a little bit more about what was going on in Maryland's mind, but really, are we going to need to have any freight line at all, or will one track be enough? I think there's a lot of opportunity here. And the final thing that I've done, and thank you for putting up the slide, is to just sort of demonstrate that if, this is, for a railroad, this is a pretty awful curve. And when you have metal wheels on metal tracks, they don't exactly stay silent when they work their way around that. Anything that can be done to make the curve more gentle, pushing it south and expanding the park, will make it a more quiet, hospitable place, and I believe it would be in the interest of the city and the area to do that. And my idea is that you figure out some way that you could take these comments, and you don't want to adopt them because they're not yours yet, but maybe you could at least put a jacket on the back of the plan and let these comments and questions have a little bit of perpetuity going forward. Thank you very much.
The matter's back before us, is there a motion on the EDR as before us? Rob, is there a motion on the EDR?
I guess that's, I guess that's the role of the vice chair. I'll move the EDR.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the EDR say aye. Opposed, no. Agenda item number 7A is an information presentation on the Dwight D. Eisenhower Memorial. We have Mr. Detman. Let me remind, just say a word about this as we go into this discussion. The way we left this at our April meeting is that we had really boiled this down to three items. There were three of these six design principles that we felt were not quite met, and the Eisenhower Memorial Commission, the NPS is the applicant, and the design team were back before us to discuss those three items. It's my hope today that our discussion will focus on those three items. And to refresh your memory, those three items are, one design principle was to preserve the reciprocal views of the Capitol along Maryland Avenue. Second was to respect the LaFonte Plan as it is, to shape this memorial site as a separate and distinct public space that complements the DOE building and the other buildings around it. And then, third, respecting the building lines and the right of way. So, those are the three kind of design issues that are before us, they're prepared to discuss in this update. There will be no votes taken today, this is information presentation only. The feedback today, the comments that the Commission may make are yours individually. These do not constitute a collective group of comments back to the design team. Based on what, they are looking for your feedback, and based on what they hear today, will help them determine how best to proceed when they come back before us. So, with that, I think I'll just turn it over to Mr. Detman.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. Staff doesn't have any further comments in addition to how you just introduced the project. So, what I'll do is I'll just hand it over to Craig Webb with Gary Partners, who will be providing today's presentation.
Mr. Webb, welcome back.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Since we were here in April, we have, sorry, we've worked hard to meet the planning goals of the Commission as set forth in the last meeting. We think it's important to move forward with this project to honor this great American, Dwight Eisenhower. We have reconsidered the design that we presented to you in April and made changes to it based on the comments that we received from the Commission. We have been in a process working with NCPC staff. We've had a number of interactive calls with them, working on different design iterations. We've shown them several different ideas about ways we might change the design in response to the Commission's comments. And we think that we have come to a consensus with the staff that the design I'm going to show you today has made significant steps towards satisfying the three outstanding design principles. I think that two of those principles, we are in total agreement about, those being Principle Number Four, and I'm going to show you graphics of these as I go through, but Principle Number Four, which is about respecting the surrounding buildings, and Principle Number Six, which is primarily, I think the discussion was about the Independence Avenue street wall and right-of-way. So, I'm going to show you those. I think that there's an ongoing discussion about the reciprocal views to the Capitol, which is a part of Design Principle Number One. So, what we have tried to do is create a new design based upon the concepts of the design that we presented previously. We don't want to take a radical change in direction, we want to create more of a continuity. And so, the concepts that we're trying to maintain are the definition of this memorial park space, the tapestry element of which has been the main spatial-defining element of that. And the tapestry has acted as a kind of mediating membrane, defining the park space, but also trying to unify the site with the disparate architecture of the buildings that surround the site. And then, finally, creating a kind of threshold and a progression, moving from the busy street space through into a park space, and then, finally, to the memorial core. So, those principles we're trying to maintain in the new design. And you see in this, in the previous design, the movement of the Maryland Avenue axes through the site, as well as we're going to spend, I'm going to spend quite a bit of time talking about the view shed toward the Capitol itself along Maryland Avenue axes. So, this is the new design that we want to present today. It eliminates the eastern and western tapestries from the design and replaces those tapestries with two columns. The southerly tapestry stays in its previous position. And so, what this design is doing is trying to maintain the definition of the memorial park space with the south tapestry and then the two columns that are moved forward. Those columns are in alignment with the end columns that support the tapestry, and they are also in alignment with each other in the east-west direction. So, they create a rectangular space. And in terms of spatial definition, we've always thought of this site expanding in layers from the memorial core, starting at the center with the core itself, then the landscape and the trees, which enfold that central memorial space and create the park space that surrounds it. And then, the tapestry is the next layer, and then, finally, the buildings that surround it create the final wrapper. So, we really see it as a kind of layering, and the two columns forward are really important to create that kind of secondary layer and define the core of the space. So, significant changes to the design. Number one, these two columns have been pulled to the south from where they were previously when they were supporting the flanking tapestries. And so, you can see the two red columns on the north side of the site of the new columns being proposed. They sit to the south of the street wall of the FAA building and the Cohen building. So, in terms of Design Principle Number Six, these columns are now completely out of the volume of the Independence Avenue street wall. Secondly, by eliminating the eastern and the western tapestry, the FAA building and the Wilbur Cohen building now become much more important in defining the space of this urban park. As I said before, we still see the importance of defining this kind of rectangular volume of the park itself, but then, stepping outward, these two buildings really start to participate much more in the visual environment of the park. And then, finally, by eliminating the westerly tapestry, it opens the Maryland Avenue view shed from what was previously 92 feet in the design we presented in April, up to 135 feet. So, it's a significant widening of that, and the westerly column supporting the south tapestry now sits only 15 feet, as it was before, 15 feet in there, and then, on the northern side, the column is completely out of the 160-foot right-of-way. So, those, we believe that those moves really substantially move us into alignment with all seven of the design principles. We have made some minor modifications to the ground plane and landscaping in response to this new design. The approach paths, the approach on the diagonals have been slightly changed so that the two new column positions actually land on the paved surface. And we have added additional trees in the southeast corner to help screen the support building. The support building previously was being screened more by the easterly tapestry, so we've enhanced the landscaping around that building to help to screen it from the memorial I'll just take you through a sequence of new renderings that we've created. So, this is the view from 4th Street looking toward the memorial core. Previously, the easterly tapestry created the threshold space on this approach. We feel that the single column standing on the right side of that approach still defines a threshold. So, you will sense as you move from the street space into the memorial park that that column will indicate a, you know, kind of passage into the space. And then, this moving forward toward the memorial core is the intimacy of spaces that we've defined in terms of these approach paths with places for people to sit, lower tree canopies that start to enfold that space, and then, finally, into the memorial core itself. And then, turning and heading back toward the east, this is a view from the memorial core toward the east. You can see that the tree canopy really defines a view. Previously, this view was flanked by the easterly tapestry. Now, you see all the way through to the Cohen building. So, in terms of Design Principle Number Four, the Cohen building really now starts to help define the space as the kind of outer layer. The view in the other direction, you would get a similar view to the FAA building. So, the columns indicate threshold, but the view goes all the way to the building facades. And then, this is just further along that path, moving toward the east, and you can see that column standing in that, and then, the Cohen building beyond. A view from Independence Avenue toward the memorial core, just to kind of refresh that idea in your mind. And so, now, I'd like to address, I think, the key principle that we're still working with staff on, and that is the Maryland Avenue view shed, the axes toward the Capitol. This is a view from 6th Street looking to the east, and you can see in the distance next to the Capitol, the easterly column, the column on the right side is the end column of the tapestry itself. We've always seen this view as primarily being framed by landscape, by the trees. So, the 50-foot cartway, which is the main central axis of this space, is framed by the street tree line, which is on the trees off the site, along that 50-foot right-of-way. And we've mimicked the street tree line with the trees on the site. And so, they form the kind of first layer and framing of the view toward the Capitol. And then, we see the columns as kind of a next layer, and then, finally, the buildings as a layer beyond that. So, again, it's a kind of layered concept that frames and really focuses the view on the Capitol itself. So, just to reiterate again, maybe I have to point, but you can see the street trees and the columns here and here, which are really setback in the second layer, within that framing view to the Capitol. So, this is a view similar to the one we showed previously of the new design, and you can see that the two northerly columns are setback from the street facade of FAA and the Cohen building and the axes of Maryland passing through the center of the landscape of the site. In terms of the view toward the Capitol along Maryland from off-site, this is a view of the new design. Primary change here is that by spreading the columns further apart, one of the key principles of the LaFonte Plan was to create a more horizontal view shed versus a more square and more vertical view shed. And so, you can see here that by moving that column further to the north, it's created a much more rectangular view. And I'll show you in this slide, on the left, you see the previous design, and the proportions of that frame were about 1 to 1.2. And then, in the new design, the ratio goes to 1 to 1.6, which is more of a golden section-type rectangle, more of a very platonic rectangular horizontal shape. So, we believe that's taken a significant step towards fulfilling that part of the LaFonte Plan. This is a view, reciprocal view, looking toward the west. This is before, you know, the kind of existing condition, and then, the condition with the new design in place. I think what you see in this view is that that view corridor is mainly defined by the landscape and the trees, and then, the building facade step back from it. The one issue that has really come up and come to the fore in discussion with staff has been the issue of symmetry. And a part of the LaFonte Plan in terms of staff interpretation is that symmetry is important on this axis. We feel that symmetry, particularly on the Maryland axis, is something that's much more ephemeral. The. The buildings themselves, few of them actually define that 160-foot right-of-way. They move back and forth, and I think you can see what we're trying to show in this slide, is that at different points along that path, the symmetry shifts back and forth, to the right and to the left. And depending on whether you're standing on the center line of the street, whether you're on the sidewalks, each of those gives you a shifting view. And so we feel that it's more an issue of creating balance and focus on the Capitol itself. The building masses form this very, you know, solid walls of the space, the landscape layers into that. And even though the view and the symmetry shifts back and forth from one side to the other, we think that the focus on the Capitol is the primary concern here. And you can see in this view, the FAA building on the left side, the Department of Education on the other side, that it's a very asymmetrical view in any case, and it shifts at every point along the path. So just in conclusion, we feel like we're moving very close to complying with all seven design principles. Firstly, by pulling the columns and tapestries out of the Independence Avenue street wall, satisfying that design principle, eliminating the east and west tapestries, which allows the two flanking buildings to much more participate in the composition. And then by widening the Maryland Avenue view shed from 92 feet to 135 feet, and creating that much more rectangular view, we think goes a long way towards satisfying that, the design principle number one. And so these are the seven design principles we feel like we are in compliance again. And I will leave you with this image of the design, and be glad to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Webb. That's very, very helpful. I'll open it up to members of the commission for comments and questions. Mr. May?
Well, first of all, thank you very much for the presentation. I am very pleased that we are actually here to have this conversation now. I think that back in April, when the matter was last before the commission, and the reception that was received, I had my doubts about whether, about exactly where the design would go from here. And I am, as I said, very pleased that you're here now, showing us this design. I do believe it is a very substantial step toward the direction, in the directions that were given by the commission. Frankly, it's a, I mean, these are some major moves that you've made to try to satisfy the concerns of this commission. I would say at this point that, you know, what we see now is certainly closer, but these are all issues that are a matter of judgment for the commission. Certainly, when we considered the matter in April, the majority of the commission did not feel that it met the design principles and could not support it as it was presented. But a number of us did, and we believe that it did meet those design guidelines. They are guidelines, they are subject to interpretation. And I have, you know, cited in numerous meetings with staff, the circumstance where we have faced other projects that have had design guidelines that were very much open to interpretation. And it would be easy enough to interpret those guidelines to essentially say that it is impossible to execute that project. Yet, we have taken those impossible-to-executes and gotten approvals for them. So it is very much a matter of judgment. The guidelines are guidelines, and they're up to the commission to decide. As far as the specific comments on the design, I would just want to reiterate the notion that Mr. Webb had mentioned that what we are dealing with in terms of the views toward the Capitol is not a view of perfect symmetry. We don't have a series of straight-faced buildings that line Maryland Avenue and that perfectly frame that view to the Capitol. Right now, there is a lot of in-and-out, there are a lot of changes. Certainly, there is variation in street trees, there's a park in the middle of Reservation 13. All of these things affect that long view. It is very different from Pennsylvania Avenue, which is low-lying and which is framed by consistent buildings and a consistent tree line. This is much more irregular. But what we have here on, along this avenue, is a balanced view. And with these ins and outs, in this, you know, very different period of architecture when these buildings were realized, it still winds up being a balanced composition. And I think that even, that with what you've proposed today, it is a balanced composition. And I would thank you for the progress that you've made on the design. Thank you.
Ms. Wright?
I'm sorry to see the side tapestries go, but I think this is an excellent compromise, which we must do. The scale, the scale is really important, I think, to maintain, particularly with the loss of the side tapestries, to hold this site together. One of the things that's always, well, and still remains, the biggest, one of the biggest challenges here, in addition to the cartway and the view shed and the framing of the Capitol, is holding this site together, which is just bleeding into the street. And I think, so I would urge that we consider going forward that we leave the scale alone. There's been a lot of conversation throughout this about, and there's been, I don't know how many iterations of scale you've looked at. I know we looked at reductions of 2%, 8%, 10%, you know, run the gamut. So I hope we'll leave that alone. It feels a little bit like there could be some more refinement of the landscape plan to help with those edges. But I think you're there. I hope that we can find our way to leave this largely intact, because it does, as far as I'm concerned, all the things that it should. And again, I think it's a really good compromise. And the design process having wended our way through this rather serpentine path to get here, is all about compromise at this point. And I am willing to support this, as is.
Ms. McCarthy?
I wasn't on the commission when you presented in April. And so one is just an information question. What is the impact on the views of the employees and the building behind from the tapestry?
Yeah, we've done, yeah, from Department of Education. We have done quite a bit of work on that issue over the course of the process, including creating a full-scale mock-up of the tapestry. And it's mainly an issue of transparency of the tapestry. We built a 10-by-15-foot-tall, full-scale mock-up to create the idea of transparency, set it in relation to the Department of Education building, gone inside of the building with staff, with Department of Education staff, looked at the view through that. And I think it was quite well-received by staff that the transparency of the tapestry did not significantly obstruct the view out of the building, nor did it impact the amount of daylight coming in from that side. So I think we've done a quite thorough exploration of that issue, and I think that all the parties involved have approved this design.
May I add to that?
You may.
We did also a separate, GSA sponsored a separate charrette for the LA that would be created. At the Department of Education, their staff was included and identified many opportunities that, for public display, exhibition, gathering spaces that will be created by the installation of the tapestry. And the infrastructure to support those amenities are included in the design.
Okay. Then in terms of design observations, I would echo those that feel that eliminating the side tapestries does, is an improvement in terms of opening this up to the rest of the city around it. But I guess, having done that, I don't often disagree with my colleague from GSA, but I don't get leaving the columns here when they're not the front columns, when they're not fulfilling a function of holding up anything, when they're not decorative or conveying anything, when you're basically near, as I can tell from the landscape plan, trying to obscure them as much as possible, but with deciduous trees, so that will only work in some of the season. And, I don't know, in various angles that I look at it, it reminds me of sort of ladder scenes of Planet of the Apes. It's just like, why, why are, they seem vestigial, like they've left over, they're left over from something that was torn down.
So for us, I think they are very important and as spatial definers of the memorial precinct. Previous discussions have also dealt with the issue of whether the tapestry might have the appearance of a billboard, of a kind of large advertisement, rather than a spatial definer. And so our feeling is that by, if only the south tapestry remains, it becomes more of an object and less of a kind of spatial definer of the precinct. And so we think that those two columns do fulfill the principle of defining this rectangular space, of also giving you a sense of passing a threshold, as I was saying earlier. So as you're, the main paths that approach the site will come from the corners of Independence and Sixth and Fourth Street, the diagonal pathways lead you in. And those columns are really important to indicate that you're passing from city space into the memorial park. So we think they are very important for all those functional reasons.
Did you bring any of the other designs, the ones that Mr. Gary rejected?
I did not. We have, we've had a principle in going through this process of trying not to make public anything that we would not support in terms of something that we stand behind the concept of and are willing to go forward and build. And so, you know, this new concept, we fully support it, think that it has the strength and integrity of the original design, and we're ready to go forward with this one. The other ones, which we didn't, you know, we did not support, we don't feel it does a good service to present those.
I only wanted to know, because, if I may, when I looked at the rejected designs and the semi-rejected designs and the "you think we would reject them" designs, I, you know, one of them was that the outer side would come off, well, the eastern side would remain on, because it actually didn't fall within obstruction.
Right.
But then that begged the question of that one pillar, trying to create the symmetry and so on. So if I can fairly ask, the pillars really are a poor compromise for leaving the two side pieces in their entirety on with the tapestry. But your point always has been that you need to create that symmetry somehow, and that without the pillars and without the tapestries, there is a very hard time delineating what is essentially a rectangle cut into two triangles. Does that be a fair way for a non-architect to state it?
I think that's very accurate, yeah.
And I think that's what I looked, I took the privilege of looking at all the designs that were not going to be presented here today, or at least many of them. And I could see where there's a struggle to go from a nice, a nice design that this commission was, or the NCPC was unwilling to support in its entirety, and make it comply with the principles, which clearly, this one complies with the principles by the letter. And now the problem is, we don't like the visual maybe as well. My understanding, and I'm not speaking for Mr. Gary, but I get a feeling he doesn't like this one as well either. But it is an effort to try to say, okay, you objected to some visual and structural principles that can't be controlled except by elimination. And I think that's how we got here, which is one of my frustrations and the reason in April that I suggested that we needed to look at this regularly, because any change was going to lead to another change, and we couldn't let this go another 15 years.
But I would like to say that, I wish Frank were here to answer that question. I would like to say, and I know-
He was younger 15 years ago when this started.
I know that he supports this design, and I do think he believes it has integrity. And we would not put something out there that we weren't ready to stand behind 100%. So we may feel that the previous design might have created a better solution, but this is a process that we've entered into, and we respect the opinions of the commission, and we want to move the project forward. And so we put this out there, 100% backing it, and, you know, ready to go forward.
Ms. White?
Well, I appreciate the work that you've done to address our concerns, and I'm just seeing this today, so I'll need some time to reflect on this and go walk the site and understand the proposed changes to the impact. So I appreciate that we have time to think about this. But in the meantime, I just have some comments and questions for you, and they relate to the scale. I know we don't want to revisit it, but that was my big issue when I first reviewed this project, you may recall. And I'm curious about leaving the columns in place, as was just asked. And I still feel that from a user perspective, which is from the street level, it's overwhelming. And I question whether you went back and looked at, I mean, removing the side columns helped, but did, were the, was there any consideration to shrinking the size of the columns? I mean, I understand your argument for framing the space. I think the landscape can do that, but the columns on their own seem even bigger without the tapestries attached to them. So what was your thought process there?
So we did look, we did several iterations. We looked at iteration where we maintained the east and west tapestries, but lowered their height, which, I think it's all about balance, and it's all about creating a cohesive design that really hangs together. So we did look at that possibility, but then we realized that a better solution that's going to satisfy more of the concerns of the commission would be to eliminate the side tapestry. So we didn't, I didn't present that one. In terms of the overall height, the south tapestry, we have done a lot of studies in the past and have shown a lot of alternatives in the 106 process that we went through two years ago, where we looked at lowering all the columns from 80 feet to 78 feet to 72 feet to 70 feet. And what we felt was lost in that process was the relationship to the Department of Education building. Currently, the 80-foot columns match that first cornice line of the Department of Education building, and really create the relationship that I think the guidelines are after between the memorial and the surrounding buildings. And so to really kind of lock those pieces together is important. What also happened was by lowering the south tapestry, the beam at the top ended up cutting right through the view shed of a lot of the windows on the top of the building. And so that important kind of relationship and views from the Department of Education out was lost. And then, you know, so the south tapestry really, we believe, needs to stay at 80 feet. To lower the front two columns in height, I think, would create a real imbalance between the kind of framing elements. And so we think that they should stay at that height. In terms of the experience of visitors to the site, that idea of layering that I was talking about before, I think that the, someone mentioned that we were trying to hide the columns in the landscape. Some people think they're too strong. But our idea is that the tree canopy mediates that, so that from a distance, the framing elements appear very strong. But as you approach the site, you start to see different elements through the tree canopy. And so I guess, I think we're trying to have it both ways, really. We're trying to have significant scale that relates to these very large modernist buildings that surround the site, stepping that scale down and using the landscape as a kind of mediator.
Can you go back to the slide where you showed the Capitol and explain the difference in your previous proposal and the symmetry of the view?
Yeah, let's see. I think this one?
Mm-hmm. So, and I appreciate what the chairman was saying earlier about trying to meet the guidelines and, you know, be careful what you ask for, I guess. So, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand this perspective. When, in your previous design, you chose to reinforce the symmetry. So, I, I guess I go back to the main tapestry and the scale of that column are, could the main tapestry be moved back to maintain that scale? Because you're still, I mean, you meet the spirit of the guideline, but the literal, if we kept you to the literal translation of the guideline, the column on the main tapestry wouldn't be where it is.
Right.
So, was that considered when you took a look at this?
We actually looked at, we looked at a lot of different alternatives for that particular column. And staff actually had some, some opinions about that and showed us some alternates to that as well. Each of the ones that we looked at, there were ones that were, that shortened the tapestry, but then it started to become much more of an object, lost its relationship to the Department of Education. We looked at tipping the columns back, which then puts the columns into the 50-foot setback from Department of Education, starts to crowd that building. So, we did look at a lot of different ideas about that particular column, none of which really panned out, none of which really had any resonance and strength to them.
I guess I don't quite understand when you say it made it an object as opposed to framing the building, even if you brought it in from the sides, not shrinking it vertically, but...
Well, there was a study of, of cutting the two end bays off the tapestry, which left three bays in the center, which became very much of a singular tableau, I guess you'd call it. It lost its sense of being a, of being a screen or being a membrane and became very much of, it looked like a picture, set in a frame, set on the site, which is very different than the idea that we see as it being this kind of mediating membrane that allows views through, creates a very good relationship with the Department of Education building. So, it lost that relationship.
The design you're, I think, alluding to a little bit, thank you. The design you're alluding to a little bit is, instead of a straight piece, if you assume that the two ends tip back, it creates almost a bow, but not quite just the two. It actually could look fairly effective, but it definitely causes us to have to go to the Department of Education and say, well, we'd like to build this basically on your property, and there would be other considerations. That one is one of the alternates that was rejected that I did look at. I think the staff, in some ways, actually probably liked it, but it does create other questions to be answered in the process. But it would meet your requirement of getting that last one out of the 15 feet.
Yeah, I guess I'm not following if you just move the column, like if you shrink it, why that would be in the Department of Education's property?
Well, you can't bend it.
Because it would be, not bend it, but just pull it in and make it-
Well, then you don't, you don't completely obscure the Department of Education, so-
Exactly. No, I get that. I just wanted you to know, that's what I was asking, just from this perspective.
Right, but remember that we're considering, we're not considering the Department of Education here as much as we're considering a monument that Congress has ordered us to, to build. The monument is, is the focus. The Department of Education is the, the item to be obscured. And I know that sounds a little backwards if you're sitting at DOE, but the reality is, is that they did not own this view shed. Congress determined that this was to be a tribute to a great general and president, and that's why there was a consideration of looking at this Stalinistic design building and saying, maybe we need to have it a little less part of the park.
I, I'm not arguing that point, maybe I just wasn't clear. I'm just saying, from this perspective, my view is skewed, and it makes me look to the left. So, I'm, I'm addressing moving the column and questioning keeping those singular columns in the-
Well, you were talking about shortening the overall length with-
Yeah, I asked, was that considered, and I, I got the answer. I'm just saying, in this perspective, I was curious what it would-
Well, so I can, I can tell you that, that the second column on the right side, you would have to go all the way, that column is actually symmetrical with the new column we proposed. So, you'd have to go back that far, which basically takes one bay off-
And makes it too short for what you're trying to achieve.
Right, and we looked at, we looked at taking one bay off of the west side, which then created a very lopsided composition. And then staff looked at taking one bay off of both sides, and that's where it became very much of a kind of framed picture. So, we did look at each of those.
No, I appreciate that, and that's what I was trying to understand.
The street wall is so irregular down Maryland Avenue, which is, makes, it's at any snapshot in time, you're going to have the symmetry, the point of symmetry is going to change. That's what's, one of the many so difficult things about this site to resolve.
No, I, I understand that completely. I'm just saying, I was struck when I saw this picture today, how it made me look at it differently. So, I was trying to understand what the thinking was behind the change, and because it was so symmetrical before, and what we're being presented today is very different. I was just trying to understand the thought process behind how you got there. So, thank you for bearing with me. I have a few more questions for you. So, you answered those about the columns and the view. I, I did want to just comment, I know that there are three design principles that were the focus of our vote, but we did bring up some comments on general sort of planning-related issues with the project, and I just wanted to touch on those quickly. The pedestrian circulation, perimeter security, lighting, public space, and I know we're not here today to talk about all of those things, but were those looked at again in your deliberations, or?
I think, I think where we are trying to get to is a basic concept approval, and then I think we've, we're now developing a very good rapport with NCPC staff, and I think, we get past this hurdle, we're definitely interested in getting back together and really starting to sort out the detail.
That's, that's perfectly appropriate. And then, my last question is, in, in honor of Commissioner Hart, who's not here, and I know he would ask this question, because he brought it up at the last meeting about the Memorial Information Center, and it made a very strong recommendation that the Memorial Information Center would be removed, because it's inconsistent with the site guidelines in the memorials and museums master plan. Was that discussed in the deliberations, or is that something as well that you need to-
I can handle that one. And we'll be prepared to talk about this in more detail at the, at the next session, when it's actually up for a vote. But we have looked at, we've looked at the need for that building over and over during the course of the project, and repeatedly came to the conclusion that we need to have a support facility there. We did also look at the possibility of trying to get some space within the Department of Education building, and we do that in one of the location, and unfortunately, such space is not free, and so it is much more reasonable and economical, and economical from our point of view, to have our own facility for this purpose, particularly since it has to be restrooms, it has to be a ranger contact station, and it has to be some maintenance support as well. You know, even if we could put restrooms in the Department of Education building, we can't really, you know, store the, the equipment and such that we need there. So, again, we'll, we'll talk about that in greater detail at the next meeting.
But that's being explored as a-
We're being, we're exploring it, but honestly, it's, I don't believe we'll come to a conclusion that we can live without that building. It would be difficult to impossible to operate the memorial, a memorial this size in this location without that support facility there.
And just as a process question, and I know we're one of the two approving bodies, but has the Eisenhower Commission reviewed these changes? Will, will they be-
They have informed, yes. They've, they've definitely been informed every step along the way.
I'm known, if for nothing else, than talking candidly in almost everything I do. So, I'll start off by saying, I don't know that I would call this a scene from Planet of the Apes. I would rather say that that pillar looks exactly like the kind that were put on the viaducts of the superhighway built by Eisenhower, and perhaps we could just write that down below on a plaque, and everyone would accept that it was a tribute to the freeways we all now drive on because of President Eisenhower.
But there were freeways attached.
You know, it's just a question of cost. The, that side would, that would be the foundation side fundraising. The, Congress clearly approved and wanted President Eisenhower, General Eisenhower, in all of his roles, honored in 1999, and even in what I would politely call a scathing rebuke of how we've gotten here by the Committee on Natural Resources under Subcommittee Rob Bishop. He reiterates, "Congress agrees that General and President Dwight David Eisenhower deserves a memorial," and goes on for a considerable period of time. So, in that spirit, it would seem that after 15 years, the one thing that I don't believe we can do, and at the next meeting I hope we will affirm, is we can't go back to square one. We can't throw away 15 years based on the idea that for another 10 or 20 million dollars, starting from scratch, somehow we will get to anything other than another opportunity for it not to be perfect for someone. But I want to be sensitive. Members of the commission are well aware, and NCPC is well aware, that many stakeholders in the public, including those who knew President Eisenhower personally, have strong objections to portions of this design, and no amount of technical changes alone will change that. There are those who simply do not want the tapestries, and that has been a challenge in a number of ways. And the Gary group has proven that many of the objections were not true. They have mitigated some appearance complaints that came from the Department of Education. They've done a lot of things, but the end of the day, sometimes when you please everyone, what you, individually, you please no one cumulatively. And I think that's a lot of what we're dealing with here today. I, for one, was not on the board, those many years back when there was an objection raised to what, what was actually on the tapestries. Scenes of, of war and peace, scenes of Eisenhower's contribution, the scenes that would have made the tapestry have a compelling reason to exist and a compelling story to tell. Oddly enough, that pleased the Department of Education, who didn't want people looking at a war scene. Not even if it included Brown versus Board of Education and federal troops ensuring education equally for all. That creates a situation in which the Committee on Resources described those trees to be proposed as looking like they could be in Kazakhstan. I've been in Kazakhstan, and he's correct. The, the nondescript trees are part of the conundrum we're going to face in the actual tapestries. And I think it's one of the reasons that the designer has constantly been asked to reduce the, the tapestries, because somehow the tapestries manage to appeal broadly to no one now, except a designer who realizes that a, a, a street that has trees on it is not in fact a memorial, and that there had to be more. For that reason, with the changed design as it is, I'm prepared to support it. But I have to be candid, I believe that our support would still face a number of challenges that undoubtedly would delay it. One of those challenges that concerns me was, this was a project envisioned to be substantially federal dollars, but with private foundation contributions, and it was mandated in the statute. To date, only the US taxpayer has been on the hook for multiple millions by both the commission and the designer. And so, as we look to the next meeting, the overall cost for doing this design, no small portion of it is the restoration of a dilapidated park, the restoration of the Department of Education's portion of this site. And I went there, I went and spent about 15 minutes before I arrived here, walking the site again, just to remind myself that that awful, awful setback between the Department of Education and the beginning of this site needs major upgrade. And quite frankly, and I said I'd be frank, a toilet facility would be an improvement if built on that part of DOE's facility. There needs to be work. It is tens of millions of dollars if you simply said, fix the park. The fact is, it doesn't make sense to fix the park and then build a monument. It makes sense to fix the park and that site at the time that we build, all are part of this monument. So, between now and the next meeting, what I'd like us to consider is that we can technically support the entire project. We can cause the Gary Design Group to complete both parts of their design. And since there has, as of yet, and this is the area I'm fiscally concerned about, not been any fundraising, nor a demonstration that it would quickly occur, one of the possibilities that I think that we could consider, approve the entire design, stage the construction. Mr. Gary has said that his organization will stay involved, his name would come off of it if it was struck to be only a low-rise park. But what we looked at here today, which I believe can and should be approved, still could be staged in a way in which we could begin construction somewhere close to next year. We could go through the improvements, leaving the final design and its cost to be staged, consistent and, if you will, predicated on that fundraising. Now, that's not a normal way of building a monument, but I've been here in Washington and taken enough tours to know that Washington Monument has a bright line that occurs at the point in which they stopped for a long period of time, and the stone that would have been contiguous was sold off from the quarry, and then when they raised the money in a better way, if you will, they began again. I'm not suggesting we start this memorial to the life and accomplishments of our President Eisenhower, but I'm saying that we, in fact, start the design with a staged concept. Now, that's one for the architects and engineers to finalize, but I certainly would not want to lose the Gary Design as it is forever. At the same time, I think that for all of us on this commission, we have an obligation, after 15 years, to get this thing going. And so, I met personally over the, the part of the break in Los Angeles, Mr. Gary. I asked him if I could see all his designs. I listened to him. I find a man who is flying all over the world, building phenomenal designs, ones that I probably wouldn't want to live in, I probably wouldn't pay for, but the world will admire. I think we lose something if we continue to say, change it, change it. At the same time, I recognize that we could produce this design sans the tapestries, please all, including the public, and preserve the rest of this to see if, in fact, the funds can be raised, the matching funds, to complete it. That's a slightly out-of-the-box suggestion, but it's one that I believe might get us moving in the timeframe of this year. Anything else, and I think that we will be sending Webb back multiple times for very frustrating changes, that even if he accomplish them, accomplishes them, at least some will still object to the very concept of the tapestry at the back. And that wasn't said here today. Nobody said, take away the entire back tapestry, but there are those who would, and before we have a vote, I think we have to recognize that their voices would continue to be loud. So, I know that's not what you came to hear, but it was what I explained to Mr. Gary that I would be presenting, is that he's willing to give up the tapestries altogether and take his name off of it. I don't believe that's the best choice. I think we should preserve his design, approve his design, and then the only question is, are we prepared to fund this, whether or not the money is raised? And I think there's serious doubt right now with the family members and others, that we could, we could raise it, but that's to be seen by the foundation. Lastly, I have to say, have all of you read this committee report on Mr. Bishop? It says something, which is, we have, it's small dollars by federal standards, but we really have lost a little bit of the control of the timetable and fiscal process. And for all of us who serve here, that's got to be part of what we insist on in the future, is that no commission sort of drag on without getting to, if you will, the first predicate is, is it billable if you design it the way that's been approved? And I know for GSA, that's one of your big frustrations, is you don't like saying what a project's going to cost. If you can't control the cost, ultimately, the final cost gets to be too high. And it's one of the reasons that I would hope we would find a path to a, to a resolution before the cost goes up by several million dollars, just in operation of the commission, not including designs that we're asking for that have to- not including designs that we're asking for that have to be paid for. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Very good comments. I would say, before I see if Mr. May would like to comment at all, our statutory obligations are to approve a plan. And as odd as it may sound, cost is really not one of our issues. Obviously, we're not unmindful of costs. We try to be good stewards. How a project is staged, constructed, implemented is really more of the National Park Service, I believe, the way they take it from us and take it from there. And if Mr. May would like to comment on any more, or correct me where I've misspoken.
Well, no, everything you said is correct. The Park Service can issue a permit to construct a memorial only when all required conditions specified under the Commemorative Works Act have been satisfied. And one of those is that 100% of the funding needed to complete the entire memorial have been raised. In some cases, it's 110%, because there has to be a 10% set aside for what we would call catastrophic damage. But in this circumstance, at one point, the Congress had said that that requirement had been satisfied, because there was a commitment on the part of the Congress to fund its portion in three, over three years. And I don't, as I recall, that particular provision may no longer be in effect. But essentially, we are bound by the Commemorative Works Act, which says that you have to have all the money upfront to do the entire thing. It cannot be executed in phases. It's a question that's been asked of us on numerous occasions, and we can't do it under current law. Of course, the Congress can change that. So if you direct us to build it in stages, then certainly.
Well, and one of the reasons that I think, if Senator Kirk's representative was here, say the same thing, we can essentially rubber stamp any good idea that makes sense. The law was not written to be inflexible. It was written to be a standard on which you come back to Congress for, if you will, a leave of absence. The same is the appropriations, which is promised but not yet delivered. And so that's one of the frustrations. If we were to have a staged recognition, and I think for all of the representatives here that are appointed, you know, or we have this because of the President or whomevers, we have this odd situation in which we're burning the taxpayers' money, and we can never get it back, including today's appearance. But we're also in a situation in which all of us should walk that site. We should be embarrassed that we're talking about making something sort of as good as it can be, and we're nuancing it. But if you walk the site, you'd say, "How could we do this in, you know, the federal city?" So one of the challenges is if Congress doesn't get a plan that allows the park to be restored, then Congress probably needs to get money to restore the park in lieu, at least temporarily in lieu of it. It's awful. And the Department of Education, quite frankly, has deferred maintenance, in my opinion, that needs to be dealt with. So that was part of the reason to come forward and say, "Is there a willingness," I believe, by Congress, and from my individual 14 years of observing it, "Yeah, if you come and say, 'We can build this amount for this amount, preserving the ability to do the tapestries and the other parts when funds are raised, and if there's any kind of, still a shortfall, to attribute some of it to the restoration of a federal plot of land under a separate appropriation to go into it,'" all of that, I think, we can get. What we can't do is Congress can't write you another check against a plan that isn't approved. If we can get to an approved plan, whether staged or not, then I think Congress is in a position to act. Otherwise, quite frankly, Rob Bishop and Doc Hastings and the rest of us have gotten frustrated to where they just want to cut the funding and tell everyone to start over. But starting over means you guys will be, you know, we'll be back, ask for more money. And I think several said this, I think the design is pretty close to as good as it's going to get unless we decide we never like the design. And I hope that's not the case, because if it is, then Mr. Gary is right. You ought to just build the park, put in some small statues, take his name off of it, and call it a memorial. And it'd be less grand, but in fact, it would be less blighted, too.
Ms. White, and then Ms. Wright.
I just wanted to thank you for your comments and your candor. You can always count on that, and we appreciate it. And I just wanted to make sure I was clear, that I want to visit the site again. I've visited it several times. And the first time we saw, or that the Eisenhower Commission came before this committee, was back in April, since I've been on the Commission for two and a half years now. So I think we did act quickly and gave, you know, very straightforward feedback, and I appreciate that they've come back. But, you know, again, today is only informational. I need to go walk the site again, looking at these columns without the panels, and they're moved significantly. So I think there is something to be said about keeping the process going, but, you know, respectfully, I think there's some deliberation, because it is, this is of huge importance on a presidential memorial. So I understand there's a balance, and the statement about starting over, I think what you're hearing is people trying to understand, can this work, the changes that were made? Does it respect the guidelines? Is it to the letter of the guidelines? No, we'd have to make an exception, as I understand them, unless I'm reading them wrong. But, you know, there is a little bit of encroachment on that right of way. I think that's something that we can live with. But I think it's very legitimate to take a look at the scale of the project. I know that we want to get away from that. But it's the scale that is what makes it a monument. So anyway, I just wanted to share with you that it is something that we need to do quickly, but, you know, our Commission is responding, I think, pretty quickly. Maybe I'm just being a little defensive. But I hope I didn't misunderstand what you were saying.
I was thinking of the 15 years, not the last 15 months.
Okay, good.
And I'm happy to walk the site with you, too, because it was an eye-opener to me to say, "My goodness, this is a tough site to build on. We've given them a difficult requirement. It's one of the reasons that there probably will have to be some give and take in it." And, you know, my view is that we probably know all we know about the problems. Now it's a question of which solutions we accept. But no, I'd be happy to. And I'm not saying today's the last day. I'm saying that I do believe that we need to be thinking in terms of getting to an approval process that might, in fact, you know, require Congress to make a change in the authorization.
I just have two thoughts. One is, design cohesion is really difficult to maintain over a long period of time. It's about as successful as designed by committee, which is what we have on our hands now. And so I'll just let that one sit there. And fundraising, I think, one of the, I think if we have an approved design, fundraising will become something that is not nearly as challenging as it is now. Because you're asking, in my days as a museum curator, you're selling vaporware. When you go to a funder, you're selling an idea. And unless they have a really vivid imagination and a lot of experience imagining and being able to receive how you're articulating these ideas, it's hard to raise money. So I hear what you're saying. I think that there's, that's a good point there, but there must be some structure. The Commemorative Works Act does, as Mr. May explained, lock it in. We can change that. There could be triggers. But the most important thing, it would seem to me, is being able to, for the Eisenhower Memorial Commission, to be able to go out to their potential funders and have an approved design that they can show them and say, "We've been through the gauntlet. We have permission. We're ready to go." If the design becomes segmented, that, it seems to me, if you say, for example, "We're going to do the park and the statuary as designed, but we're not so sure about the tapestries," oh, that makes...
Yeah, I was only saying that we would approve the design.
Funding would then be the contingency for the final build.
But I think that that makes sense for, if they can get an approved design, they've got something for people to say, "Yes, we support that. Here's your check." Wouldn't that be nice?
I'd write a check.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate all the work that's been done by our staff and by the design team to, and I think it's a definite positive direction that we've achieved here today from the last design. I will say that I, and I appreciate all the thoughtful comments of my colleagues up here. I agree with almost everything that was said. And I think Chairman Ices' concept about staging is an interesting one. If that ends up happening, I would like those last two columns to be the last thing that go up, and so we can see if we can, so we can live, see if we can live without them. Because I've said from the beginning that I never did like those, the biggest baddest concrete bollards that the city will have ever seen.
If you go to L.A., you should see them.
Right, with the freeway. So I think the elimination of two of them, two of the eight, is good. And I'd asked, I think, the last time, and maybe Mr. Webb, I associate myself with Commissioner McCarthy's and Commissioner White's comments about the columns. But the question I asked last time was, on the scale, but one of the questions I asked last time was the material, if it was a different material, if it was more transparent, if it was the steel mesh of the tapestries, did you consider those and reject them? Or were they looked at, or you just wanted those?
I think that the columns, in our minds, were creating a connection to Washington, D.C., to the nation's capital. They are a little bit out of our normal design vocabulary, but we felt that that kind of columnar architecture did create a connection to the Capitol. And we proposed them in limestone, not concrete. So the current design is in a buff-colored limestone. We've looked at stones from Kansas, from Eisenhower's home state. And, you know, so they're not intended to be, well, there've been a lot of statements about other materials, but our intent is that they be built in limestone.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. That's certainly a positive element. I would just say that I think this design does move, does, as I said, move in a positive direction. I would hope that we could not live without those last two, those last two columns. I think if they were in some of the materials that Mr. Gary is more familiar with using, they would be a lot more, they'd create that threshold that you want to create there, if they were in the steel or the other materials that he normally, that he often uses, that are beautiful and striking. And I see your point about how it fits in with Washington, but as the Chairman said, that particular architecture there is not something you necessarily want to fit in with. But, well, I think you referred to it as Stalinist architecture. I was listening. Anyway, that's all my comments. Appreciate all the work that's been done to get to this point.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none. Mr. Webb, thank you. I think we're moving in a very positive direction as well. Next item is Agenda Item Number 7B, is another information presentation on the Franklin Park Vision and Transformation Plan. Ms. Moulton.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. The National Park Service, in partnership with the District of Columbia and Downtown D.C. Business Improvement District, are developing a new vision for Franklin Park. This park is located in the heart of downtown at 14th and K Streets Northwest, and marks the beginning of a new era for parks in Washington. As recommended in 2009's Capital Space Plan, the NPS, City and Bid, have formed an innovative partnership to collaboratively address a number of complex regulatory and jurisdictional issues, and revitalize a park in a part of town with a growing residential population that's in need of some recreational amenities. Together, they will fund, implement, operate, and maintain a new Franklin Park. And this model could be considered for other public realm locations where national and local interests overlap. So today, the partners will present background information on the project and share the alternatives under development through the NEPA in Section 106 processes. The EA is currently being drafted, and NPS will return to the Commission probably in early 2015, once that process is complete. They anticipate a draft probably this fall. So they'll be back in early 2015 with a formal submission. So at this point, I'd like to turn things over to Superintendent Bob Vogel of the National Mall Memorial Parks, who would like to say a few words about Franklin Park and the unique strategies that are being employed to make this vision a reality.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. It's great to be here again. And I would just like to say that there aren't many projects that we deal with on the National Mall and memorial parks that don't have some contentiousness to it, as we've just experienced the ongoing debate on the Eisenhower Memorial. But I think we have a project here that perhaps, so far, we have found there's a great deal of enthusiasm and a great partnership. And so far, it's been one of the most exciting and positive efforts that I've been involved in, in my three years here. Franklin Park, as you heard and you know, is one of the most historic and certainly a prominent location in the city. Been there for many years. We have photos in the 1930s of children playing in the water pool of the fountain. And today, we would all recognize that perhaps, other than at lunchtime when the food trucks are there, and there's some capacity there, in the early morning, in the evenings, the place is tired and somewhat decrepit and in bad shape. So we have engaged in an incredible partnership with the District of Columbia, the Department of Planning, and the Department of Parks and Recreation, and also the Downtown Bid, in getting together and saying, "What can we do to revitalize Franklin Park, make it an exciting, vibrant place, and perhaps use it as a model for other areas within the district?" So we've got a great effort going forward. The National Park Service has provided money for the NEPA compliance, and the District of Columbia has provided support for the planning, and now is committed to providing design drawings for us. So we appreciate the district's support in the effort. And I think it's a very exciting effort. And at this point, I think I would like to turn it over to Hallie Boyce from Olin Design, and Janelle Johnson, also from Olin.
Good afternoon, Chairman Bryant and other Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to share the Vision and Transformation Plan for Franklin Park with you today. This site has an incredibly rich history. And from the cultural inventory, the landscape inventory that was prepared by the National Park Service, we have learned that it has two periods of significance, that of 1791 and then 1867 to 1936. As in the LaFond Plan, it was noted as a reservation within the city plan. And then during the second period of significance, there are two plans that are significant that I will show you in a moment. One fact that we thought was particularly interesting, however, is this park has been the source of water for the White House during much of the 19th century. And that's a part of the history that we would like to reveal to the public and educate people about, particularly given the precious resource of water as we know it today. This is the 1886 Plan, and as you can see from this, in the center there, that circle is a fountain. So there's always been a presence of water in the middle of the site. The circle in blue is the actual historic spring. And the curvilinear paths and numerous trees, these other little circles that you see, really evoke the inspiration of A.J. Downing and all of his work on the National Mall, particularly in the area of the ellipse and the Washington Monument at one time. To the west, the little dark spot there was actually a lodge and comfort station as well. So there is a precedent for a building to be located within the park. The 1936 Plan is really what you see there today for the most... The 1936 plan is really what you see there today for the most part, except for these Y paths that you see on either side in the ellipse areas. Some of the cultural resources that still remain are the Commodore John Barry Monument and Plaza on the west, on 14th Street, the central fountain in the middle of the park, the view shed north and south that looks through that plaza area, the two elliptical lawns, east and west, the pre-1936 trees. And as our understanding is, this pathway, this sort of Beaux-Arts approach to the paths, was worked to work around these existing trees at the time. As well as the paths themselves are also a cultural resource, and the central plaza again, including some of the smaller details, such as the quarter-round curbing that surrounds the edge of the site, lighting and what have you. Olin and our design team, including ZGF Architects, have looked at and studied the site. You can see it sits really between the White House in the lower left-hand corner and Mount Vernon Square in the upper right. It really is a transportation hub. McPherson Square Metro Station is in the southwest corner. It services numerous bus lines, I think 32 in all, as well as two circulator lines. So we have to think of that interface between park users and those using the transit systems. In addition, there are two D.C. bike-share stations within a block of the park, and it too is on the bike system pathway. We've done a site inventory and also looked at the ground floor uses that are adjacent to the park on all four sides, including Franklin School that you see to the east, right here. The actual ground plane itself, this is not a flat site, it's really a tipped plane. The high point is in this upper northeast corner, and the low point is in the southwest corner as one moves to McPherson Square Metro Station. The green lines that you see here are accessible paths, so the majority of the site is accessible. However, it has three stairways that lead to the central plaza, which are not accessible. But what I really wanted to point out were the dash lines that denote areas of the public have created these sort of beaten paths. People are trying to move. There's a great growth in downtown, as you know, and many people are trying to move from the northeast corner to the southwest corner through this site in the diagonal direction. I think we can all agree that the site does need a refresher. This is the fountain itself. It lacks a filtration system, so it's truly a maintenance challenge. It has to be completely drained each week in order to be clean, so this is not really sustainable at the moment. The stone is spalling, and the nozzles are not fully functional. Other items we note on site are the great compaction of the soil and the erosion that results, particularly along this 13th Street corridor, where a lot of the food truck activity Finally, the smaller items, the pavement and the site furnishings are a constant maintenance requirement and challenge. We had an arborist look at the site and investigate each and every tree. If you see the spectrum on the right, unfortunately, the trees in Franklin Park range from fair to very poor health. In fact, the arborist has recommended that 17 trees be removed as soon as possible. What we are trying to do in this vision plan is think long-term, the next 50 to 100 years, and look at the ideal age distribution for trees to have a long-term canopy. The shady canopy is one of its best-defining features from a landscape point of view, and we really want to try to rebalance that canopy, provide new planting, so we're sure that that shady canopy is there in the future. The three partners came together and had these goals for the project, to activate the park, make it a true destination, a vibrant place to be, engage and connect the community, including the transit users, and pull people into the center of the park, reveal its history more to the public and to the potential tourists who are gravitating to this area of D.C. more and more, and infuse the site with sustainable systems. And finally, to develop a private partner, excuse me, private-public partnership to manage and finance for success in the future. We had a wonderful start with the first public meeting, and through that meeting, we arrived at the program that you see here. I would say, from the public's surveys, the number, sort of the top three were seasonal plantings, a children's play area, and then, I think, a close third between an interactive water element and an open lawn area, really to maintain some of the open lawns that are there today. We have worked with the team of ZGF again and the partners. We looked at five different alternatives, really, that are broken down into three options or approaches. The center schemes really work to refurbish the center of the site as it was historically, trying to work with the circulation system as it is as much as possible, just proposing plantings in that area that would strengthen the sense of room in the center of the site, but would also provide a play area to the east and then a café to the north, as you see in the image on the right. The diagonal plan was more about truly reinventing the center of the site, that central plaza, trying to make it more multifunctional and flexible for eventing, to provide an area that would not impact the beautiful plantings in the rest of the site, and at the same time, make a more direct diagonal connection to capture those, the flows that are there today from a pedestrian standpoint. We are also looking at reworking the edge of I Street to interface better with the transit and providing a café to the south. The edge schemes were, I would say, somewhere in the middle. We were trying to accommodate the diagonal flow, but more using the forms of the circulation system, as you see today. And I hope you can see this. We worked to pick up these paths and take them more directly into the center of the site, so one could, if you wanted to, get to the center of the site more easily. And so there would be a curvilinear movement, but on the diagonal as well. In these instances, we were looking to really work with the fabric of the central plaza, but make it more interactive as the public desired. And then also creating two plazas to the south and locating café and play space as well. So we went through the CVA workshop with the National Park Service process, and we came out of that with one scheme that we wanted to show you today. It's called the Edge. It builds off of those two latter schemes. This is just a bird's-eye view from the southeast. And then in plan, you can see where we've proposed redesigning the central plaza to be more useful, more flexible, while keeping the existing fountain in some manner, and then making the circulation changes to allow for the diagonal flow, still proposing the play area to the east, and then a plaza and café to the south. We are proposing many new tree plantings all along the street edge to better define the street in relation to the park. It's very open and doesn't accommodate the pedestrian flows properly, which impact, and you saw some of that erosion that I showed earlier. But also to create this paved area associated with the café to the south, so that one could hold special events in that area as well. As for seasonal plantings, we're thinking, like the example of Logan Circle with an Olin project in Philadelphia, of using those seasonal plantings to better define the edge of the site and give a greater sense of threshold. And then like Canal Park here in D.C., using a native plant palette that would be as easily maintained and vibrant throughout the year. For historic interpretation, we're looking forward to exploring this further, but wanting to celebrate the water, particularly in the central plaza. But ideas too about potentially having historic timelines in the pavement, something that talks about the broader history of the site as well. And then the play area, we wanted to think of the inspiration of the Potomac watershed and nearby Rock Creek Park, using more natural materials that would engage little ones and provide families a place to be in the park on a daily basis. ZGF has been looking at the design of the café itself, which would also include restrooms as well as storage, maintenance storage for the National Park Service, so it's more easily maintained, but also for the public-private partnership, which would really be managing the site. But we're also considering sustainable systems here, green roofs, photovoltaic panels, and the like. As for the central plaza, we've been asked to look at that a little bit more in-depth, trying to provide a balance of sun and shade, looking for occupiable edges to encourage people to linger longer, and then also how to accommodate that diagonal circulation. These sunshade studies show the existing condition on the top and the proposed condition below. So while we are opening up that central plaza and this plaza mall, if you will, to the south, which is the flattest portion of the site, we can see here in these diagrams that there's shade throughout the day in spring and fall, and even in summer as well, that there would always be shade along the edge of these two locations. This just shows a section through the central plaza. On the top, again, the existing condition, which really shows that the predominant experience in Franklin Park at the moment is that of shade, whereas what we would be proposing would give you a greater variety of sun and shade. This just shows the central plaza and the ability to occupy the edge. In the northeast corner is an existing low-seat wall, and we'd provide seating in these other locations. And then the central fountain, we would like to make that more engaging as well. And this shows the diagonal flows through that space. As for eventing, we've looked at that as well. This design really allows the café to operate while there's an event happening, a movie, for instance, in the central plaza, but it also would allow for larger events, potentially farmers' markets or holiday markets that could occur both in the mall area to the south as well as the central plaza area around the fountain. And finally, in the central fountain, we wanted to engage the edge, make it more visually prominent. Its jets at the moment are very weak, and look at the historic fabric and try to work with that as much as possible. Again, like the National Gallery of Art Sculpture Garden, giving people the opportunity to reach in and touch the water, which is not easily done with the current fountain. And then like the example in the lower left, being able to see those jets more prominently from the street, which will pull people into the space. So this is the existing condition. This was our initial proposal, to raise that fountain up to seat-wall height, so people can sit along its edge. And then we'll be exploring various ideas with regards to jets that might be interactive as well. So this is the existing condition today, and this is our proposal, showing really a delightful fountain in the center that sparkles in the sunlight, the opportunity to sit around its edge, proposal of movable seating, so people can engage the space as they would like to, seasonal plantings that would make it vibrant and interesting year round. I think all of these elements are really working to pull people into the park, making it an engaging place that will really build community in downtown. Thank you very much. We'd be happy to take any questions you have, Bob and myself.
Questions or comments? Ms. McCarthy.
Mr. Chairman, I just would really like to commend the Park Service, Olin, all the designers, and some people that I don't have an arms-length relationship with, the Office of Planning staff and the Downtown Bid. But this, to me, following this process, it's been such an outstanding example of cooperation, but also problem-solving, because there's a lot of regulations and issues that make it hard to do these kinds of public-private partnerships. And I certainly would particularly signal out Bob Vogel, because there's many projects that we know that we've worked on in the past that have involved a lot of hard work, but if there's not leadership at the top saying, you know, just because we are the Park Service of Yosemite doesn't mean that we shouldn't operate differently when we are in urban areas, that's been, that leadership, I think, has led to a lot of very positive relationships in many different things. But Franklin could be just a knockout and just such a great example of, you know, all of what we've read of Fred Cannon Project for Public Spaces before, that if you are trying to figure out how to deal with difficult and potentially undesirable people hanging out in parks, the way to do that is to make it more desirable, so you have more people, so that it's someplace that everyone feels comfortable. And I think that's the kind of park that you've designed here, and I just wish we could make it happen tomorrow. But I do think for us, Mr. Chair, that this is a fabulous model and one that I hope we can emulate with respect to Pennsylvania Avenue, because I think we'll really need something like this, the flexibility, the willingness of the private sector to contribute resources, the willingness of the city to contribute resources, but everybody to be looking at making great places, not just, you know, ceremonial spots on a map.
All right. Other comments? Mr. May.
I would echo much of what Commissioner McCarthy has said about this. I think it's been an excellent collaboration and due in, to a great extent, by everyone who's been involved, from the design team to the Office of Planning, under current and former leadership, and also the park staff, my colleagues, who've been working through this process. And it's very new to us, but it's something that I think we're all very anxious to see realized, and we are optimistic about what this means, not just for Franklin Park, but what it could mean for other locations within the district, including Pennsylvania Avenue. So, thank you very much.
I would just say ditto to, I think, Commissioner May. It's fantastic. Very happy about it.
We're all very happy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The last item on the agenda is another information presentation. It's Agenda Item Number 7C, and it's the information presentation on the D.C. Water Seawall Improvement Project.
I'm back. I get to start and end the meeting today. So in the past year, well, in the past year, the Commission has formally reviewed Department of Defense insulation master plans along the waterfront, both of the Potomac and the Anacostia Rivers. And during these reviews, the issue of flood risk management and climate change adaptation was one of the main topics of discussion and concern. And so we thought that it would really benefit the Commission if we presented an example of one of the agencies along the water that's actually doing something to address their flood risk and climate change adaptation. So we invited D.C. Water today to present their seawall project. The seawall is meant to protect the Blue Plains wastewater treatment plant. So this seawall project is actually part of a bigger climate change adaptation and flood risk management strategy or program that D.C. Water is currently developing. And for today's presentation, Bo Badenewitz is here today to... And for today's presentation, Bo Badniewicz is here today to make the presentation, and he welcomes your comments and your questions after his presentation. Bo?
Thanks, Amy. Good afternoon.
Welcome.
And, I'm gonna get this going. If this would cooperate? Okay, great. So as Amy had mentioned, there's two components to what I'd like to briefly introduce you folks to, and one of them is the thinking, the thought process, and the risk mitigation planning that went into the construction of the existing partial seawall that was constructed around the southern end of the Blue Plains facility, and the thinking about what's going to go in and the planning of what's going to happen for the remainder of the facility and how we coordinate with our neighbors to the north, which are NRL and JBAB. Just a quick overview, I know this was supposed to end at 3:00, but I'll just, spirit of brevity, I'm just gonna try to tie up as quickly as I can here. Just from an overview perspective, DC Water provides drinking water, provides drinking water to the district, and also provides wastewater collection for the entire district in addition to approximately 1.6 million residents surrounding the district area in both Virginia and Maryland. If you notice, if this works, Blue Plains is located at the very bottom end here in southeast DC. It is considered one of the largest advanced wastewater treatment plants in the world because of the levels of nutrient reduction it gets down to. It's also considered a critical facility because of its location and because of the treatment it provides. We're currently undergoing approximately a billion-dollar facility upgrade to meet the new nitrogen limit for the Chesapeake Bagel. As part of that project, this, sorry, excuse me, as part of that project, there was an expansion of the Blue Plains facility, which wound up encroaching onto the Potomac shoreline. That encroachment required a involvement of the Corps of Engineers and to provide a detailed analysis because of the construction into a flood plain and into a flood zone. So luckily, there was quite a bit of data and extensive hydraulic and computational fluid dynamic modeling that had been prepared for the construction of the Woodrow Wilson Bridge, and we used a lot of that data to evaluate 100- and 500-year storm frequencies. That sort of looked at the intensity of these storms and what the impacts would be. And the bottom picture gives you a sense of where the red arrow is pointed to where the Blue Plains facility is in relation to the Wilson Bridge. So a lot of that data was, that was used was extremely local and very beneficial in developing our analysis, which really drove us toward the construction of the partial seawall. And that partial seawall protected the southeastern portion of our facility from a 500-year event, and that's built to a height of 17.2 feet. Now, that was for the existing partial seawall. Moving forward, the driver for expanding and protecting the remainder of the facility with an additional seawall was, you know, work that had been done by FEMA, which had remapped the flood insurance risk maps, which had provided, which basically had more of the Blue Plains facility in a flood inundation zone. So the risk to Blue Plains was a treatment issue. So since it's considered a strategic asset with no seawall, you know, this graphic basically shows that most of Blue Plains would be inundated. So that was the real, the driver for this. The exposure to flooding, it's what you see visually from above, but most of the critical facilities are subsurface facilities. They're located in interconnected galleries which contain a tremendous amount of mechanical and electrical equipment that if they were flooded or exposed to continued flooding would compromise treatment and essentially result in environmental catastrophe, really, if that happened. So, so the essence of this, DC Water is moving forward with a plan to construct a seawall to a height of 17.2 feet around its entire facility. And that basically will protect against what's considered a 500-year flood, and that includes storm surge, potential hurricane impacts, climate change. It's sort of a very adaptive and resilient plan, response to that. Let me move on and get this going. So this gives you an overview from a north-to-south perspective. The existing seawall is here in this lower in the southeast corner, which ties into the existing filtration facility. The remaining components of the seawall, which are described as segments A, B, and C, would go up the Potomac side of the seawall and basically protect the remaining facility from any additional flooding. And right now, we are currently working on some of the hydraulic modeling, addressing some of the onsite technical issues. At the moment, we don't intend, we intend, excuse me, to procure a designer later this year, early into the first quarter of '15, and construction, we don't anticipate starting until '27, '17, and '19. One of our, one of the key points that I want to make is that, you know, NRL, which is our neighbor...
Excuse me, sir. We can't use the laser on the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize. Our neighbor to the north, I apologize for that, our neighbor to the north Naval Research Lab has reached out to us to, to, oh, to coordinate with them with the construction of their seawall. So that's something that we're going to continue working with them on as we move forward with this process. So at the moment, we don't have any kind of conceptual, there are no renderings, we don't have any pictures yet, we have a sense of the height of the seawall and its preliminary location, and that's pretty much what I have to present to you folks. Any questions, comments?
There's been discussion about the joint base concern about seawall, and others of us have some concerns about Anacostia Park and how it will be affected. Is there any coordinate, I mean, if water comes in at one end, does it still affect you, and has it all been looked at comprehensively or not? Are you just...
That's the coordination aspect. When I said with the technical issues we're looking at, sort of to prevent that bathtub effect, I mean, you can only build, you know, you build a flood wall up to a certain extent, but water's going to come around, you know, only to the extent of where the seawall is. So that's the coordination aspect that we need to work out with NRL and then consequently with JBAB as well.
All right, thank you.
So yeah, that is something that's in our, that we're thinking of.
Just a quick question. Did you mention the Corps is involved?
The Corps was involved initially when we did the original prod, the original...
All right, so they've done their part.
They've done their part. We received a conditional letter of map revisions because of, you know, construction and flood plan, but we continue to work with them, the Silver Jackets, the rest of the community, NOAA as well, in terms of getting any new modeling and new information that will help us with, you know, accurately sizing, you know, the wall to make sure that we have the most up-to-date information.
And just to clarify, the Silver Jackets is an inter-agency group that addresses flood risk in DC, so NCPC actually recently, you know, joined the group too.
Ms. McCarthy.
Just a quick information question. If you could put that, the diagram that was on, or the, over the aerial that was on just a second ago. I was just curious where, in relation to the flood wall, are the sludge digester eggs that you've proposed?
Can I walk up and I can I just point on you?
This is, this is the area right here.
Okay.
So that's where the, and in fact, they're looking to seed them, we're looking to seed them this month, start seeding them, so.
Seed them?
Yeah, they need, oh, sorry. They need to be, just to start them off, you need to start them with a seed sludge.
Oh, with the appropriate little anaerobic digester bacteria?
That's exactly right. Every kind of bugs, you know, we have to...
Cool.
Yes, I just wanted to commend DC Water for all the work they're doing on this project and on flood prevention and stormwater management throughout the city. Just a quick question on your first slide. I thought I saw some reference to 570,000, was that maybe a 10-year-old DC resident, is that 570,000 households, because we're up to 600 and, almost close to 650,000 residents now, aren't we?
Yeah, it actually doesn't refer to residents, it's...
It's households?
It's actually locations, yeah.
Oh, locations, okay. So we're up to 600, almost 650,000 residents.
We'll look into, see what that is, if that's meter count, is that per meter count? We'll update that if that needs to be updated.
Anything else? It's been a good day. Thank you very much, and we are...